Recording in progress.
All right, let's start this meeting on November twenty eighth at six P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, my flagation under God, into this law with due attention sprawl.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Johnstone?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Crossman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Hess?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
Here.
Mayor Dependa?
Here.
Can you get an agenda approval? I approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Crossman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes say nay? Curious. All right, now we're moving on to special presentations. Um, this point, I'd like to ask Councilmember Brooks and Johnstone to step forward. Um, and you've got a certificate of appreciation if you want to come up front. Um, we'll do the swearing in shortly after for the new councilmembers. So for both of you, thank you so much for your service dedication to the city. Um, you know, it's it's hard to come in, um, being an appointment through the appointment process, just the appointment process itself is very difficult. There's a lot of people that applied for it, obviously, in both your cases. Um, congratulations on making it this far and all the things that you've both done for this community. Uh, both of you were very engaged, very active in attending all these different events. So thank you so much for your service again. Um, here's a little appreciation. Um, Amanda, thank you so much. There you go, Ashley. Thank you so much for your service again to the city of Yelm. And appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll see you again soon.
Um, can you sit right there?
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Uh, but before I say that's it, uh, I think councilmembers would also like the opportunity to say their thanks and gratitude for you as well. Um, we'll start, just go down right if anyone has anything to say. Joseph, is there anything?
On spot.
On spot.
Now that I have successfully connected to the internet, I was paying attention. Thank you for serving. Thank you for making me available and, uh, for all your input. And we just really do appreciate you guys and really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Please just go down the aisle if you want to.
I would like to thank you for your service and I made you guys each a little gift. Yeah, since, um, very few people sit in the seats and they don't realize how difficult this position is. So I, these are exotic wood posters I made for you guys. So this is tiger wood. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Amanda, this is you and Boo. You're welcome. No, thank you for your service.
I just want to say thank you both, um, for all your, your input and your perspectives and all of that. Appreciate it.
I just want to say thank you, uh, for being one step up and take that big step to support and, uh, represent the community. And additionally, also for your activism that you guys do out there on the streets themselves. So keep it up. You guys are doing good work.
When you both stood up, I wanted, I voted for each of you because I found you both to be incredibly articulate. And I really respect and appreciate that. And you've done a great job. And Ashley, I don't think I'll ever sit next to anybody as colorful again. Sorry, Trevor.
It's true.
You both did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you both so very much. All right, now at this point, could I ask Joseph Richardson to come on up? Oh, yeah, I'll take your round two, man. Uh, Tracy Wood and Trevor Palmer. We'll go ahead and do the oaths, um, all together. Um, just repeat after me, just line up right here. Yep, hopefully it's, we get you on camera too. I want to scoot a little bit, a little bit more. There we go. Um, it should be with the, there it is. Um, all right. We're good. Scoot over this and get you on the camera. All right. I think, I think that's it. I think we're good.
One camera two?
Yeah, all right.
There it is.
All right, um, so I'm going to go ahead and say, just repeat after me when I say insert your name or obviously don't repeat that. But after this, we'll go ahead and take your seats and, um, we'll go ahead and get this meeting, the rest of the meeting started and finished. All right. I state your name.
I, Trevor Palmer.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of laws of the state of Washington?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and partially reform and discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully and partially, or impartially, or impartially, or in parts, charge the duty. To charge the duty.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
City of Yelm?
City of Yelm.
City Council?
City Council.
State your position.
Number one.
Number two.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We will get to, I have met with most of you. I have met with all of you, the new incoming councilmembers. Um, so you're aware, you'll get your, um, onboarded process starting tomorrow. Um, we'll get laptops and all that, and we'll get you ready to go for the next meeting. We'll get you new name tags. You don't have to keep that up. Um, under in that, you should be well aware of what we're doing here in the, um, on the agenda. I've met with each of you directly on it. If you had, I guess some of you had questions and you reached out to, um, staff. So thank you for that, being engaged. And with that, let's go ahead and continue on to, um, item B under the special presentations. And we have the comp plan presentation. Gary, I believe you're leading.
Yeah, I'm just going to enter it. I'm going to use a consultant.
Okay.
Um, and they have a brief presentation. So over the last year or so, maybe even more, I don't know. Um, we've had conversations with you about the requirement that the city update its comprehensive plan. Uh, it's required that we do so every ten years. And we're in that cycle of update. Uh, the comprehensive plan is, uh, and Robert will talk a little bit more about it. It basically touches on everything we do in the city. Um, transportation, utilities, parks, land use, economic development. Um, we have a consultant who is working on this. And it's a grant, partially grant funded project. So the, uh, fee for doing that date is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Two hundred and twenty-five goes to the comp plan, another hundred goes to development code updates. So we are just kicking it off. We're working on tools to engage the public. And that's what our consultant is here tonight to discuss. Um, our consulting firm is House of Levine and Robert Kane.
All right, step up.
Yeah, let me, uh,
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, so like Gary said, I'm Robert Kane with House of Levine, the project manager for, and the consultant of the consultant team, House of Levine. Uh, joining me today is Su, Su John and and Miles, and they'll be helping on this project. Right now, we're, we're here doing a quick, uh, drop in, introducing ourselves, giving an overview of the project, having some discussions with community members and actually, uh, looking and doing a background study of, of the community. So, uh, Su John and Miles have been traveling around the community. We had a really good, um, uh, tour by Cody yesterday. And then it was, what I have to say, one of the best tours I've ever had of any community, and I've done a lot of them. Um, he really knows this community. Um, so I just wanted to go real quickly and talk a little bit about what, what Gary had just mentioned about the comp plan and where we are in this, the, the, the process and then some of the tools, right? Because a big part of this project is community engagement, finding the vision and the, in the, 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 the themes that we want to focus the comprehensive plan on, right? So getting a, a good idea of the pulse of the city. Again, we're House of Levine, we're, we're, um, based in Chicago with offices in Seattle and in Los Angeles. Um, we work all over the country at different scales, so small communities and large communities. Uh, we do, uh, economic development, planning, uh, design, and, um, also it's not up there, but geospatial, right? So a lot of G I S and geoanalytical stuff, analysis and mapping. So what's a comprehensive plan? It's a road, roadmap or blueprint for the next couple of decades, right? Next ten, twenty years. Uh, what's the purpose of the comprehensive plan? Is to engage the community, identify the community's desires, needs and aspirations, assess the kit, the city's existing issues and strengths, and, and provide a guide of a broad range of, uh, of top topics, policy topics. And it needs to be a dynamic document engaging. And that's what we are, are here to do is help to craft that document, to make an accessible document that's a community, that encapsulates the community's desires and growth moving forward. So why is it important? It tells the story of the, of Yelm city vision and values and informs development proposals. It's a foundation for the regulatory framework. So as part of this comp plan, we'll also be helping with the update of the uniform development code, the zoning code. Um, it will coordinate with local and regional initiatives, support the C I P budgeting process, right? So we'll be assessing infrastructure and transportation and, and give some guidelines and some policies to help with that. C I P budgeting, um, identify our future studies and potentials for grants and funding, uh, from the state to help with the, uh, uh, implementing the initiatives. And also it's a process of informing and educating the community, get everybody on the same page and encapsulate those visions, desires. This update also, uh, the state has, um, passed a couple of, uh, bits of legislation that requires, um, some consistency, right? So going back to your existing comprehensive plan and looking at it and adding the new requirements, statutory requirements. One of those two big, uh, uh, movements was the Growth Management Act, right? Having to maintain consistency with that and then also addressing the increase of missing middle housing, right? Housing is a, is a concern all across the state. Actually, it's all across the nation. Or we're dealing with housing and doing housing studies all across the country and the different locations. And of course equitable inclusive policies and a thorough public engagement and outreach, uh, uh, facet, right? Again, like I said that a couple of times, it's, it's really engaging that community. And the key topics, we'll be addressing some of the key topics of transportation, housing, economic development, parking, open space and, and utilities. And so what I wanted to do real quickly is just kind of break down the, the five steps. So we have five steps in the plan. It's a fifteen to eighteen month work process. Uh, we are today in this kind of in between step one and step two, right? We've done the project initiation. We started to talk with, uh, staff leaders and, uh, department heads. And now we're moving into the community engagement. And this is where we wanted to share, Gary asked, uh, if we could share some of the stuff that we're going to do to encourage that engagement and activate the community. So these are again, some of the, the tasks that I've already completed is the staff coordination, the staff kickoff, department heads meetings, talking with city council, this kickoff here. And then we will be meeting with the subcommittee, the steering committee, which is the planning commission tomorrow. And then again, we're moving in, like I said, we're kind of in the one, two phase. So now we're starting to, we developed the project website, which I'll show here shortly, some community surveys. And basically the foundation of our engagement, we'll be talking to some stakeholder groups, the business community, and later on doing a community vision workshop. Um, and of course, working with staff through the process to make sure that we're focused on the right, the right topics. And we're looking at this all on the same page. So the first item is, and what I'll do is I'm going to just go over these real quick and then we can jump into the, the live version. So we have a project website. It's completely outside of the city's website, uh, but it's linked to, to the website. So we'll be working with I T to provide a, a, a link. And this website will have all the latest and greatest of what the process of the, the Yelm comprehensive plan is. So where we are in the process, summaries of engagement exercises, the feedback that we're hearing. We want to be completely a hundred percent transparent. So, um, that's one of the big components of having this public engagement. And that's one of the requirements of the comprehensive plan is to have a good public participation plan that we'll be working with, with Gary and staff to, um, to complete and submit. Um, but this will have the latest news, the documents, how to get involved, um, and some of the online engagement exercises. This is the community questionnaire. This will be available to, uh, community members and business owners. So this starts out as a community, um, uh, survey for residents. But then also at the very end, it can transition to those business owners. And so we've been talking internally, uh, with staff about creating a direct link to those, just the business owners, right? The ones that don't live in the community but own or have a stake in the community because they, they run a business and we want to hear from them. And the, the third, uh, online exercise is map social. Map social is a mapping application where you can drop a pin based on these topics you've seen in the legend, fully customizable. This is just the default and we're still working to refine that. But identifying those special places in the community, dropping a pin, why it's a special place, or if it's a problem area, why there's a problem there. Well, you know, and this, and each person will get to make their own map. We'll combine all of those, the, those findings and those maps and do a summary, right? You'll get a heat map of, okay, these are the special places, either places that people want to see be maintained or expanded on. And then these are the areas that they'd like, you know, the team to look at, right? And write policies that, to help those areas. So those are the, those are the three, uh, items. I was going to just go real quickly to the web. These are all on the web right now. So the first, the first one is the community survey. And you'll notice here we've created a branding, right? Just to kind of brand this project, the, we tried to take in, we, we looked at your website and we looked at some of the, you know, i- icons around the, the community and, and, you know, and we tried to kind of encapsulate that, but it's really just not an official, uh, logo. It's, it's something just to kind of represent this project. So that's sort of a logo brand that, okay, oh, that's about the comprehensive plan. And this is a survey that the community can take and it goes through all a couple of different topic areas. And we're still working through this, but it talks on topics of housing and, you know, resident, residential, uh, areas, commercial and industrial areas. And community facilities and services, again, those, some of those topic areas that I had mentioned previously that we're going to discuss, transportation. And as you go through, you'll get to the final page where you'll, you'll be asked. Now get to that, where they live, right? So we want to know, and we're going to change this a little bit so that it's not so precise, but what area of town you live in, right? Because some, some people don't want to disclose their exact location, you know, depending on what their comments are, right? But, um, we want to know like generally what area of the city of, or if they're in, even in the urban growth boundary area. So this will be changed a little bit. But as you get through that, the very last question is if you own a business and you say yes and go next, you get into the business community questions. And this is where we're also going to ask, well, where's your business located? We don't, you don't have to give us the name of the business if you don't want to, but we want to know where, because if you, based on your, you know, your comments, it could be, uh, based on the, the area of the, of the town. So that's the community survey. Here's the, the website that I had talked, talked about earlier. It's broken into five segments about the plan, news and updates would be latest and greatest. We're still working through some of these pictures, um, and getting that right. And then obviously there's getting involved. And this is the, 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 the page where you can jump into that online questionnaire and, or that map social, um, exercise. Um, so this will be the sort of the, the home base for the comp plan moving board. Once we complete this project, we'll hand off this website to the, to the community. And so those are the three tools so far that are developed that we're going to make public very shortly and start the broadcast socialized so that we can start to get that input from the community. With that being said, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Smith?
Um, you mentioned the steering committee. I was out of curiosity, who's on the steering committee?
The steering committee is the, that's the planning commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Hess?
Um, with the public outreach, um, and you answered part of it, but I'm kind of curious on when you start looking at the data that's collected. How, how much is going to be for those that are actual residents within the city? Residents within the urban growth area and then those that are residents of the surrounding area? And the reason why I ask is if we don't get much engagement of actual residents and it's more of, everything's way more towards one other group, how are we going to be able to see that? Do you have that?
Yeah, so yeah, so on that map and then see if I can go back to that. But what we're going to do is identify those areas and ask somebody that's responding, do you live in the urban growth area? Do you live in, in town and then kind of what general area of town you live in? Yeah, yeah. So we're still working through that, but yeah, we want to capture everybody's. And if we can get those locations, then we can also filter by, okay, these are the concerns for people that live in town. These are the concerns that, that people are having, you know, in the urban growth area and even outside, right? Yeah. And of course, the business owners too.
Councilmember Richardson?
I was just wondering too, along with the questionnaire, because a lot of times when you have surveys and questionnaires, uh, the, there's really a small percentage of people who actually fill those out. Yeah. So what I wanted, you have good response? Are you used to having good response?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and, and that's one of the, what's nice about extending these, so these exercises, because they're on the web, can last a bit, a little bit longer. It's of like one-off workshop events or, you know, like a, a community gathering. So it'll be up there and as we, we monitor that continually, you know, we see that we're missing a segment of the population. And then we work with staff, like maybe we can include something in like the, the, the water bill or, or in the, the newsletter or the email blast or put it out on like Twitter, X, I guess it's called now, um, or, you know, Facebook. So working through that to target some areas, right? Yeah. And then if we have to, we may knock on door, we've, we've even gone to knocking on doors, you know? But yeah, I mean, because I mean, there's really a key component of that is, is, is that community, but we want to hear from the community.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
I was just going to ask for an update like this. Is it relevant at all to dig back in the archives and find out the original vision statement for the city? And if we did, is that, do you ever work on updating those?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's one of the processes, right? You know, because, uh, you know, goals and visions change over time, but some stay the same, right? There are some vision statements or goals that are just enduring, right? You know, so, so yeah, we look through those.
So have you seen that original?
We're in that process. Yeah, we're in the process of, of, of doing that background. And that's going to be part of, we're here getting a feel for the community, we're documenting uses and taking a lot of pictures. And then, yeah, then background, um, background work, yeah. And then bringing that forward. And that's why we have that subcommittee is, okay? This is, you know, we're reading these forward and these still relevant. Let's keep these and the build off of some of them, maybe modify them or, or add new ones.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hess?
Uh, in line with the steering committee question, the stakeholders, who, who are considered stakeholders for this project?
So the business owners, of course, uh, any community member, we're looking for the, you know, engaging with the Chamber of Commerce is another group. We're going to be talking with the, the tribe tomorrow, the squalling tribe. So, you know, the, you know, people that have a, a stake in the community, right? They're vested, so, but I mean, everybody's a stakeholder. You're a resident here, you live here, we want to hear from you. Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. All right, we're now moving on to our public comment portion of this meeting. Um, if you wish to address council on whatever, whatever, um, please fill out a card if you haven't already. Um, or we can just, sure, we can get you on. At this point, is there anyone that wants to address council? Is there anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on towards the consent agenda. Councilmember Hess?
That we, uh, approved the consent agenda as presented.
We'll give her a second. Second, second by Councilmember Smith. Um, just to the public, we do have, um, November fourteen, twenty twenty, the irregular meeting minutes as well as approval of subdivision final plot B. That find that the project includes subdividing four point four acres into twenty-two residential parcels located eight eight one Burnett Road Southeast. It's been motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes say nay? Curious. Moving on to new business, we have awareness number one, one, zero, six, including the fiscal years of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, mid biennial budget amendment. Stephanie, I believe it's you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, councilmembers? So, um, the budget amendment starts on page nine of your original packet. And if you have that pulled up, I want to follow along. So R C W thirty-five A thirty-four, one thirty does require us to do a mid biennial budget, um, adjustment. No later than December thirty-first. So, um, before you, is, are the adjustments not only to the twenty twenty-three budget, but also the twenty twenty-four? Because we're in the middle of the biennium. So, um, starting out with twenty twenty-three adjustments, um, in the, the general fund, we did, uh, receive a small A W C loss prevention grant. So we're just putting the revenue of that grant and the expenditure of that grant into the general fund. I have to say this year we have received, um, a handful of small grants. And so every time I receive those small grants, we want to add them to our budget. Um, we did have some, um, expenditure adjustments for the equipment rental fund. Um, we had some capital and leased expenditures that, um, exceeded what we thought we had budgeted. We're not asking for more money in this fund because it has adequate reserves and those reserves are meant for these expenditures. We didn't, we just didn't budget enough expenditures in that fund. Um, and then in twenty twenty-three, we do have some, uh, project carryovers in the road and street construction fund and the water capital improvement fund and the sewer capital improvement fund. So those are listed on page nine under the twenty twenty-three adjustments. Um, also in the I T equipment fund, we had an expenditure adjustment of nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Again, we have the revenue in that fund. We just, um, needed to bump up that expenditure. When it comes to twenty twenty-four, um, which is on page ten. So we estimated all of these numbers right back at the end of twenty twenty-two. So now that we're midway through the biennium, we've reviewed our numbers and we do have some adjustments. Um, in the general fund, which is the large category, we have about two hundred and thirty thousand of adjustments to salaries, to benefits, supplies and services. We found this year that, um, several, like everybody else in the economy, we had increased costs for supplies. We had increased costs for things like fuel, um, electricity. So we do need to adjust our budget in the general fund to account for those increases. Um, also, we've talked about this in the past, we're recommending, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of one-time monies that we've received in the general fund. We want to transfer that to the, um, municipal building fund to earmark for some kind of future municipal building. Um, we don't know what that would be, but we're going to move it over there so it doesn't get spent. It'll be in its own separate line item. Um, so it's just kind of like setting up that savings, getting it out of the general fund so it doesn't get spent away. Um, let's see. In the street fund, we've talked about this before. Um, we do, we have seen a decrease in the motor vehicle fuel tax money, um, coming into the street fund. So we're just adjusting the budget down. Um, they will require about eighteen thousand more dollars of general fund support. As you know, the general fund supports the street fund. So to make up for that lost revenue, we do need to support them a little bit more, but we don't have to make up that whole amount. Um, and then in the water capital improvement fund, we are seeing more system development charges than we originally expected. That's revenue coming in and that's from all the development that's going on also. So, um, we're in, we're increasing the revenue by six hundred and eight thousand. That's pretty significant. And that will go towards future, uh, projects. Um, in the equipment rental fund, um, we are budgeting for the replacement of one police car. Um, that's seventy-five thousand for that police car. Um, it's, and I stand corrected from when I met with finance committee, it's about fifty thousand to purchase the car itself and about twenty-five thousand to outfit that car. Again, in the, in that fund, they have the money to cover those expenditures. We just need to give them that, um, expenditure authority. Um, in the stormwater, the water fund and the sewer fund, their insurance costs have gone up by about thirty-six thousand. So we're increasing their expenditures for, to cover that. Um, and then in the general fund, we have a couple of small rollovers. One, so in twenty twenty-three, we budgeted seven thousand dollars to, as kind of like a match to get the art district going. They didn't do that in twenty twenty-three, so they're just asking us to roll over that seven thousand so they perhaps can get it done in, in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then our own Lynn Roy has done a great job at recreation programming this year. She's been able to bring in some sponsorships. She's brought in some revenue. So she's just asking to take that money, it's about seven thousand dollars and use it for programming in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then on page eleven, there's a significant amount of project carryovers. Um, and Cody's here, so he could address specific projects if you, if you want that. But, um, so page eleven are all the different capital projects, starting a municipal building fund. We've got seven road and street construction and then water and, um, sewer capital funds. We have, of course, the biggest project is the W R F and the sewer capital fund. And so we hope to get that finished in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four, early twenty-five, yeah.
So, um, those are all listed out on page, um, eleven of your packet. So I know it's a lot of information and, um, I'm more than happy to meet with people one-on-one. If you ever have questions, go ahead and email me or call me or stop by. If you ever have questions, go ahead and email me or call me or stop by. Um, that is a high level summary of what we have. And I do want to mention that, um, even with all of these adjustments, we are still needing our general fund reserves of twenty percent plus some extra to.
Counselor Richardson.
So you had mentioned the seven hundred and fifty thousand out of the general fund to transfer to reserves of front three or two, which is a municipal. And then once that's earmarked, it can't be used for nothing else, right? It's going to be earmarked.
Council would have to take action to use that money for whatever.
So that's going to be transferred there then if we needed to use that for anything we could or no?
You could, but like I said, it takes council action. So, yep.
And then, sorry, just to add on that, it's municipal building fund, correct? So it's for future, um, like for a new city hall or whatever. Um, this is just saving that money, making sure that we, um, you know, build that fund up, but it's absolutely up to council how we spend that, um, when we do.
So then I was just really, um, actually impressed with the six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety six revenue. Um, with the, uh, the water capital improvement, that's, that's phenomenal. So, yeah. I just want to share that. That's great.
Some other questions for Stephanie. That's a lot. So a lot, many cities do it, um, budget annually. We do a biennial budget, um, saves a lot of time. And I think over the long run for staffing, for staff as well, um, this, it makes more sense to plan out for two years rather than one. Um, so this is our big, um, update or amendment. Counselor Hess.
Um, I just want to clarify for those that might look at this in the future, uh, under the housekeeping items that IT equipment, that expenditure. When you say that that was something we decided that was cited earlier this year or last year, that, um, instead of budgeting the IT department, they would actually bill like the public service, public safety, and would come out of theirs to pay for whatever services were being done. Is that correct?
Right. So the internal service funds, um, all of the departments that use those services pay in, into those services. So they have built up reserves to pay for the IT services, to pay for the vehicles. So when we originally did the budget back in twenty twenty two, we did the allocation. So the revenue was going in, but we didn't, um, so for example, say the revenue going in was five hundred thousand, we should have budgeted five hundred thousand in expenditures because we didn't need to build up any more excess reserves. Um, but when we did the budget, we did five hundred thousand revenue, but we did like four sixty in expenditures. So we just need to close that gap.
As I said.
And that's part of just to learn for, um, the staff, so.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Kaminsky.
I move to approve ordinance eleven, one, six, biennial budget amendment for fiscal years twenty twenty three and four.
Counselor Hess. Second. Any further discussion? So we'll call vote. Counselor Wood.
Aye.
Counselor Richardson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossman.
Yes.
Counselor Smith. Counselor Hess.
Yes.
Counselor Palmer.
Yes.
Counselor Kaminsky.
Yes.
Looking curious. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number B, underneath business ordinance number eleven, zero, eight, rezoning parcel five, two, nine, two, zero, 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 three. Uh, also known as fifteen, one, oh, six, car loop southeast. Gary.
All right, thank you. Evening council. Welcome new council members. I'm Gary Cooper, planning and building manager, and, uh, we were approached by, uh, Mr. Craig Beaver, uh, with a request to rezone the parcel that the mayor just read off, the one with six zeros in it. And the parcel is referred to as the Carter Loop Rezone, and the reason for that is, uh, it's actually located on. See if I can do this now. It's not oriented you. Uh, maybe do a little bit of a zoom in. You likely all are familiar with it. You've probably driven past it a thousand times. Where my cursor is, is the parcel that we're looking at. It's right at the bottom. And see, see the, uh, so it's a point nine four acre parcel. It's an interesting parcel because, um, it's, it's a commercial zone, completely surrounded by residential. And it's also a parcel within a subdivision. So it was sort of zoned at the same time the, um, the subdivision was created, which was, and I believe it was two thousand and five. Here, I just want to run you through the various. So that little pink area there, it's the C one commercial zone and it is surrounded by, um, R four. And I believe that's, I can't read that actually. Is that R six or sixteen? Cody, help me out. Um, R, oh, five, oh, okay. So that would be the county. Um, and then the thing with the bricks on it is, um, that's an institutional zone, um, for schools and such. So, um, just a few facts about the subdivision. Try to share, share one more if I can find it. Instead of, yeah, let me see. There you go. Is that there? So this is the, the actual subdivision that it's in. And again, you can see where the lot is within the subdivision. I've never really seen, um, a situation like this before where as part of plating a subdivision, they create one lot that's its own, the separate zone that's surrounded by, um, the residential lots. I have a feeling maybe at the time, maybe they were thinking it would make a nice neighborhood convenience type commercial use. It's never developed that way. Um, and so, you know, upon receipt of the, the rezone, we did the typical summary and analysis, which is in your, uh, packets. I'm not going to go through all that, but basically what we're required to do is review it to see whether the rezone would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, whether it would be compatible with surrounding land uses and such. And, uh, we found that it would meet the criteria for a reason under those particular, uh, levels of review. Uh, we did take it to the planning commission and the date for that was October sixteenth. They held a hearing. Uh, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the rezone request. And of course, we noticed the, the proposed rezone in the Squali Valley news. We sent the proposal to all the properties within three hundred feet of this parcel, which we're required to do, and, uh, posted the site and public services building, basically did all the notification requirements. Uh, we had one, um, question regarding the rezone, and it was from the members of the homeowners association within this plat. They were wondering if it were rezoned and developed, would they be required to participate in the homeowners association? And the answer to that is yes, they would be because they're actually part of the plat. They're not a separate development of any kind. Um, some reasons that we think it makes sense to rezone this are one, if you look at the way this lot is accessed, it's accessed from within a subdivision. It's, it doesn't have access to Yelm Avenue. It's not really, uh, communicating as such as a commercial property to the Yelm Avenue or the strip. Um, two, it, it fits in with, again, you know, we've talked a lot in the last several months about our housing action plan and the housing needs. And we're not keeping up with the number of units we need to construct over the next twenty years. So when we can find opportunities the, to provide more residential development, we're trying to make that happen. Um, three, it does, and I've been informed that, you know, there are concerns about taking commercial out of commercial and putting it in residential that we need to hold on to our commercial. But the one thing you may recall, um, about two to three months ago, we adopted our new joint plan with Thurston County, which is the plan for the area right out the city, uh, right outside the city, which is the urban growth area. And in that plan, we made lots of revisions to what the future zoning and land use will be in the urban growth area. We added a lot of commercial. So we actually, if we include the urban growth area and future development, we have a lot more commercial today than we did a year ago. Um, I guess with that, I will just open up for questions and comments.
Counselor Hess.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I went through and I read the packet. I'm calling twenty twenty three, the year that we're taking commercial, making it residential. This third one that's come before the council for that. First one was a few months, was some months ago, a large commercial property that in the discussion, person, the owner of the property said, well, you need residential. And this was a large tract that was being changed over and made it quite clear. Commercial just needs twenty percent to stay commercial, but no single family homes. The rest of it could be townhomes, whatever we, you know, those kinds of things, which would have brought in a lot more housing because it's not single family homes. And even more affordable because, you know, townhomes at times are cheaper than a single family home. And we let that go. Then we had a discussion in reference to Home and Terra where the developer in, and both of these owners and developers that we went with said, we can't get anybody to come and do commercial. Uh, because if it's not on the main strip, nobody wants commercial there. They don't want to have it out in the outlying areas because there's no traffic. This is one that I would gladly support turning into residential because of the way it's set up. The other two, you know, I, I'm just questioning, but I think what we are saying to people out there who own property that, well, we need housing. So take your commercial and come in and ask us to change it over because you haven't been able to develop it. Because the big box stores aren't coming in, the national chains aren't coming in, the big businesses aren't coming in. And yet for months, I have been making it quite clear that the chamber and small business owners are looking for retail space. Retail space for daycare centers, retail space for, uh, bike repair shop, bike, uh, sales shop, uh, retail space for all the things that are sold at our, um, at the various activities we have at the park, that when they have those people that are there. I've talked to some of those people. They're saying, I'm looking for retail space somewhere that I can actually set up a shop instead of having to always come to these farmers markets or various other things. So I'm just kind of, at what point are we going to start turning to these developers and saying, we need you to be creative? We have given you the tools. We heard your concerns that the frontage of having the retail space, we worked on changing that code. We made it so you can have retail below apartments above or condos or whatever it may be. And we even had somebody present last year, uh, earlier this year, a, uh, architect who showed what various ways of going about doing this to include parking that might be needed. I'm just wondering, at what point do we, are we going to start asking these? As I said, this one here, it's reasonable. It sits in a residential. It doesn't make sense. The others, they didn't, they, they should have been, uh, pushed a little harder on saying, we need the retail.
Well, okay, um, let's hold the terror. All right, Gary, then let's try to keep the comments to this.
This has nothing to, I understand what you're saying, but it has nothing to do with this ordinance.
Counselor Smith, um, yes, I would agree. Um, let's keep this to the, to the, hold on, council member. Let's keep it to the, uh, rezoning of this parcel. Um, agreed that there is, you know, other votes out there. This isn't the time and place for that. If you do want to go ahead and talk about that, we could have.
Thing is that he brings.
We could absolutely do that during your council report or at another study session. Gary, if you would like to entertain the question, please.
Well, just, I want to clarify to Home and Terra, we did not get rid of the commercial. We required them to do what they agreed that they needed to do in two thousand and five. So there are five commercial buildings that are being constructed. That's what they were originally supposed to do. So we didn't eliminate commercial. We just added more residential to that particular area. So we kind of got the best of both worlds there. We didn't back down. It was a negotiation and, uh, they didn't want to do it. But I mean, if you're asking when we began to require it, we've already begun to do that. There are situations where we have said that you absolutely have to do that because it's something that you agreed to eighteen years ago or whatever. Um, the other one I believe was the Edwards Rezone and that, I mean, I, I can see where you're coming from, but it is right adjacent to, uh, a fairly heavily developed residential area. And the parcel in front of it, we did not rezone to residential. It's commercial and that's the one that's on Yelm Avenue. So, and I guess the only other thing I would say is if you include what we've done in rezoning the urban growth area, the areas that are going to develop over the next twenty years, we have a lot more commercial this year than we had last year. We've added a lot of acres.
Counselor Crossman.
So, um, this makes sense. It's easy to, should be easy to prove. Uh, cause if you look at a map, if you've been around Yelm a while, you know, this piece of land, I'd go by it countless times and like, who would build a store that this, it doesn't make sense at all. Sometimes things get zoned. You know, with good intentions, but this doesn't work in real life. And so we should just, it should be residential. And you don't have a lot of commercial property available. That's vacant land. It just needs somebody to buy it. So I don't think we're going to lose a lot changing this to residential. I think we'll actually gain a lot more making this residential than, um, it being a commercial property.
Counselor Boyd.
Gary, I'm here. Thank you. I'm curious, uh, I, I see that, that this thing, this was drawn back in two thousand and three. Um, and there's, and as anybody who knows that property knows, there's an old building sitting there that at one point or another was something. I'm curious, uh, uh, more than anything, I'm curious how this happened. I mean, why would they, because looking at it, you can see that was that's five more pieces of, that's five more parcels there, five more houses that, in the development, I, I would have thought that was something that they would have taken into consideration. Because as, as you mentioned, it's been vacant. There's nothing going on there and has been for a while. I'm just curious if there's any knowledge or information or correspondence or anything that would indicate why, how this actually happened. Is it the same property owner that, that today that owned it back then? Do you know?
I really don't know. Cody, I always, when questions of history come up, I always refer to Cody to see if he knows, but, um, and I, you know, the files on this, because they're so old, I can only speculate what the reasoning was. But I kind of get the sense that it was, I, I'd call it a very modest mixed use approach to a subdivision where they wanted to, again, maybe have like a little corner neighborhood store or something like that, but.
Could it perhaps be that it was a business out of that little building way back in the day and maybe in the development process, whoever was there said.
Last I remember is it was a little antique shop.
DJ.
The, like MRE thing for campers, for, uh, if there was a national disaster, you could go and get food, you could and revival place, that's survival.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's the last dive we did.
All right. Any other further discussion from council? Or any comments from public on this too? If you want to speak on the subject, please. Counselor Crossman, did you?
Yeah.
Would you mind stepping to the podium and stating your name, please?
Rick Richardson. I've lived across that parcel for a lot of years and it's, it needs to be rezoned. I mean, just.
Look at it. Yeah.
That, that's the only comment I have. I mean.
Thank you.
It's kind of it.
Counselor Crossman.
I move to approve ordinance number one, one, zero, eight.
Second. Second, Counselor Smith, is there any further discussion? All right, start down here. Um, do a roll call vote. Counselor Kaminsky.
Yes.
Counselor Palmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hess.
No.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Crossman.
Yes.
Counselor Richardson.
Yes.
Counselor Wood.
Aye.
All right, well, one descending vote, motion approved. All right, thank you. Thank you all for this period. Moving on to item C, professional service agreement for SR five, oh, seven Bald Hill Road Southeast Roundabout and Morris Road Southeast Bald Hill Road intersection. East Brad, what do we got here?
Good evening, Mayor. We got a professional services agreement with parametrics. In the not to exceed amount of two hundred and ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. Preliminary design of the SR five, oh, seven Bald Hills Roundabout, also known as five corners. I'm going to clear my screen here. So this is just a real conceptual drawing. Um, just to kind of show you guys what could potentially be there, five corners. Um, as you'll notice, there is a small roundabout at Morris and Bald Hills. Um, this all remains to be seen. We've got a lot of work to do, traffic studies to get through to figure out what our best options are. Um, so in this agreement, um, well, first of all, is probably. well, first of all, as probably most of you know, uh, Wash Dot came to us with this project and said, we realize that this needs to be done. But we don't have the staff to do it. So, um, they said, if Yelm is willing to take care of it, we'll fund it. So.
Right, this often, it happened often, where Falls Dot releases money to a municipality.
Well, it kind of seems like maybe it's happening more recently because they've tried to hit up Thurston County for uh, Bay Road, around about there. And they hit up Pierce County for around about at seven oh two. So there has not been any movement really on those, but we jumped at the chance because of the huge benefit that this is for our city. So, um, did you say that this has never happened?
This is the first time.
Really?
Yeah.
The first, we are ahead of the game, folks.
All those projects are connected, um.
Yes, yes. And really, if you, if you really want to get down to it, if you, if you look at what that, what the state would like to do, these roundabouts will work together. We all know that seven oh two is terrible. So hopefully that happens sooner than later. So, but we're getting the ball rolling now so we can get going on this and it's, it's going to, for day to day traffic. I think that this is going to help us a lot. Now, when we have a shutdown on I five, is this going to save our bacon? Probably not, but once those other two are in, it's going to make a huge difference. So, um, so we had on, if you find the date, on September sixth of two thousand and twenty-three, we received, received an obligation letter from Wash Dot in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and zero cents for preliminary design, conceptual design of the roundabout. So, um, so this public service or professional services agreement, um, with parametrics is just the first phase of this. It's figuring out what our best options are. They're going to come to us with a few different options of what that's going to look like and we're going to have public involvement. We'll probably do a open house at the community center and let everybody come in and share their thoughts and concerns and, uh.
One more before council gets into questions. Oh, could this also be a five corners possibly?
This could possibly be five corners again, um, and that's something that's going to be looked at if, if any of you have been around since the nineties, you remember that Morris Road went straight to five oh seven. And um, that could potentially happen. There could be a fifth leg to this roundabout. So, um, and that could potentially save us from having to build this roundabout Morris Road. I'm hoping that that's the case, but traffic studies will dictate we're going to have to do there. So.
Counselor Smith.
Okay, so we have, I, I guess what I'm curious about is, do we have a contract with Was Dot? So we have a letter that says we're going to pay this, but do we actually have a contract that states, okay, have we seen it? I don't know.
I don't know. I, I'm more than happy to send it to you.
Okay, because it feels like and I, a lot of these things get, I know, get hashed out. It seems to be in public works committee. And I'm not under, you know, don't, um, I don't attend those. So we do have a contract. The city has a contract with Was Dot and a letter.
Yep, an agreement.
And is there, is the contract sound? I mean, they're not going to come back and say, oh, we were just kidding. I mean, I don't know, because we
No, no, and, and that's, no, that's a good question. And that was the same question we had.
And we don't have to vote on that, that contract as a council? The, the contract between Was Dot and the city for the overarching, I don't, I'm asking.
That, that's a good question.
Not in agreement for that, um, as far as them authorizing us that money, no. Otherwise, yes, if we were taking money or expending that money to them, this is, this was a, it's, it's a Was Dot project. The city of Yelm hooked it over. They were saying, here's ten million dollars to do this project. We absolutely waited, um, until we actually, um, got that letter in hand, first of all, saying this money will be, because we heard, this has been going on for, since session where we were discussing trying to get this money so we can do the project faster. So we can, we have the tools and we're ready to do it. But until that letter, like you're saying, um, was in our hand, we couldn't announce, we couldn't say that, you know, it was just, hopefully we're going to get this money. The award letter made it real. The contract, um, formalized it, um, saying that they are going to give us that money.
The contract, did you sign?
I might have signed it, um.
Yeah, I think you did sign.
It was either myself or Cody is the public works director, the public services director.
How does it work as far, sorry, I have one more question. How does it work as far as, so we're going to contract with this company and pay them, what was it, three hundred thousand dollars? And then we submit a bill to Was Dot?
Yes.
Like insurance?
Monthly, monthly.
And that's all spelled out in this contract? Okay, all right, thank you.
And just to be clear, this is just the first phase of this. We've got, you know, almost a million and a half dollars to get through, uh, design, because this is a big project. So there is a lot that's going to go into this. I mean, there could be.
What did we go over, Ben?
That's a good question.
That was also a question we had for Wash Dot and I mean, we're doing this in phases. So we've got this one point three. If we exhaust this and Wash Dot for some reason is not willing to step up, that's where it stops. So that being said, they have also assured us that if there are overruns.
Assured, what kinds of, like, come on, like, percentage is typical in these projects. I'm sorry, what, what's typical for an overrun? So, I mean, obviously we're not going to have another ten million dollars. But what's, um, typical in some of these?
I don't know that there is a typical percentage, especially these days.
But I mean, I guess that's, that's the concern is what happens if we, you know, in three years, everything, the price of everything has skyrocketed and now we have this mess that we can't finish because.
If the, if the state's budget does not allow for it, then we stop. And then, and that, and, and we would stop at design. So.
At the design phase, this, this portion. So we wouldn't actually go to construction unless we had the money in hand. If there's overruns, we would hopefully learn by, uh, by that point where, where we do, um, send it out for bidding, um, what that number is going to look like. And if it says fifty million or ten million, or whatever it is over, right? We'd have to, at that point, pause until we can get confirmation from Was Dot to proceed with additional funding.
All right, thank you.
Isn't this the project we talked about at study session that had the big juicy contingency money fund that went with it? Or am I thinking of something else?
That's the W R.
Yeah, yeah, they were talking about the built-in overruns on that. Yeah, worst case scenario, if we did go over a lot, we could absolutely go to our representatives and say, um, and I think, um, Thurston County might be already saying they like to see more money, um, for the project. They want a bigger project. Um, we, we, we would ask and hopefully be able to get that.
Yeah.
Do you have more comments on it?
Yeah, so just the, the number that they came up with was from their budget with contingency. So it has a contingency in the ten million, the ten percent contingency. And like, uh, Brad said, what we do is we'll do each in design phases. So if we get a bid back that says fifteen million and then we have eight million left, we go, okay, we're not going to take the bid unless Was Dot guarantees us more money. Um, so we'll continue to go in and exactly if there's a change order that comes up, that would, we would have contingency built in. So you, you know, if the bid comes in at nine million, there'll probably be two million contingency. Um, so if there's a change order, you can reflect that. We don't have to go back for asking for more money once the project started. So that, and that's what my worry would be too, is we wouldn't start the project unless we knew the money was there. We had the same letter. We had the same obligation for that.
Okay, and there's the contract thing that was nothing to do with council. It was done by the city, but not council.
Yeah, so it's similar to a commerce grant, like part of a commerce grant. They'll give us the grant. You guys don't have to approve the money, but once we spend the money like this, you have to approve the expenditure of the money. So that's where you're the check and balance. Because you can go, you know what, you know, you got the money? We don't want to do this. We're not going to build a roundabout. We want traffic to stay horrible in Yelm. Let's get, let's keep it like that. The contract, but that's, you're the check and balance now is going, hey, yeah, you can spend the money. We're okay with it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from council?
Uh, did this project come directly from D O T or did it go through the T R P C? It came from Wash Dot. That's interesting.
This was led by, um, Andrew, Representative Andrew Barkus, getting all these, um, there is, as Brad mentioned earlier, there's three of them that are part of this project. And it's also part of the, um, the I five bridge as well, needed for that. Do you want to talk about a little bit? I just want to mention, T R P C wasn't involved. So Mark Daly from T R P C, as you know, was in those meetings with us because he knew this project was coming and wanted to get it done. So he did. He was on those initial, we had initial meetings, the mayor and I with Barkus probably almost a year ago now, where we talked about, can you guys do this? And Mark Daly was in those meetings with us to kind of drive it, saying, and we, we were big advocates of yes, let us do this to get it done. We didn't want Was Dot to wait till twenty-seven, twenty.
It sounds like he, he kind of handled it and then handed it off for to us, uh, you know, took, kind of took the reins on the, the communication between the city and the D O T on getting.
He had part of, he was in the same conversation we were. So he was
I would say he led the conference. T R P C didn't lead the conversation. We did as city, but he, um, supported us a hundred percent.
He was the advocate for us.
And that's, um, help me out with the math here. Um, I'm looking at two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for a preliminary engineering. Uh, but there's one point three million dollars for preliminary engineering and conceptual design, the million dollar conceptual design.
Yeah.
It's because I'm in the wrong business.
Yeah, we all are. Yeah. And, and like I said, this, this almost three hundred thousand is just to get started. This is going to get us through conceptual, give us some ideas of what we can and can't do. Um, and then at that point, we would amend the contract for more to pull from this one point three five.
The other thing to add to that too, is part of that money is to reimburse us for our time, right? They, Was Dot will pay theoretically during the time when Brad is working on this, or I'm working on, they're paying my salary for those three hours, those four hours when we're actually working on this project. So part of that money is reimbursing the city as well.
Fund, oh, sorry.
Go to Counselor Richardson and Smith.
No, so with that said, so they're actually paying your salary rather than tax dollars, paying your salary? That is, is it taken over?
No, not.
Probably basically compensating.
Yeah, so my salary comes out of several funds. They would pay part of the fund back to those things. So that would be money that we would save that because my time would still be used during work.
You're not getting extra.
No, it's not like it'd be extra bonus on the top. Yeah, that would be great, but no.
Counselor Smith.
Um, so what fund does this come out of? The two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars? And then we write a bill and we send it to Was Dot and they send us a check and we put it back in the fund.
Three sixteen Road and Street Construction Fund.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Kaminsky?
Absolutely.
Um, I'd like to get the show on the road. I think it's a cool project. So I'd like to authorize Mayor DePinto to sign a professional services agreement with Parametrics in the not to exceed amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Two ninety-eight, nine twenty for the preliminary engineering of the five oh seven Bald Hill Road Roundabout.
Counselor Hess, second. Somebody else from the Hess. Is there any further discussion? All right, let's go down, um, the role, Counselor Wood.
Hi.
Counselor Richardson.
Hi.
Counselor Kaufman. Counselor Smith. Counselor Hess. Counselor Palmer.
Hi.
Counselor Kaminsky.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Cody Brad. Um, I really do think this is going to be the first project that's really going to start moving traffic here in Yelm, um, on the meeting project. So thank you for that, council. Moving on to resolution number six, four, six, temporary sign authorization during the holiday season. Cody, is this you?
It's me, please. I'm the sign guy.
Um, so before you was a resolution, um, we, as, uh, we had, several things have led up to this resolution. Um, we've had a lot of people talking about our sign code. We've had a lot of temporary sign enforcement. We've had a lot of temporary sign permits filed for the Christmas season or holiday season in general. Um, and so to get ahead of this and kind of show good faith to the city and to help with staff time, it was the idea of the management team and the mayor to come up with something that could alleviate businesses to allow them to participate in the holiday season without having to go through a permitting process and us having to check it. So this is just a temporary fix for this holiday season to allow businesses to put up temporary signs um, for holiday sales, for whatever they might have, um, to kind of show good faith towards the city and us to continue to work on our code. This resolution doesn't change our code. It just provides an amnesty for these businesses just during the holiday season. And the dates we picked on there were, um, I think November fifteenth to January second. Um, and the reason for that is most sales start shortly before Black Friday and then most sales end shortly after Christmas. So that would we don't want to end at January first because people are out. So January second would end, they would start to move their signs around then. Cody, does this apply to only this year or is this for? So the resolution will be forever. Um, but we, the whole goal of this is to continue to look at our code, make our code better, um, to provide things, maybe have this codified at some point where during the season, we allow all temporary signs for all businesses. Um, so this is just a temporary relief until we can codify something later. Council questions, comments? Counselor Richardson.
I'm actually really impressed that you guys would do that during this time of year. I think that speaks volumes to the business community. Um, so thank you for doing that. And I, we always have these resolutions. I hope these things don't get abused because then those codes get really bad. So thank you.
Counselor Hess.
Uh, if this is going to be like just a blanket one for year after year after year, uh, I would recommend, uh, just having the end date being January second or the following Monday, because if January second falls on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, we want to give them that leeway. Uh, I would just make some recommendations enough to say that.
Other comments, questions? Counselor Richardson.
Motion to authorize Mayor DePinto to sign resolution number six, four, six, allowing temporary times during the holiday season.
Is there a second? Counselor Palmer, for a second. All right, um, is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, we'll just do a audible, um, all those in favor say aye. A, post, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to old business, it's not scheduled. Moving on to standing council committee reports, starting with public safety, no meeting. Going to public services committee.
That would be me too. On, so we got a broader uh, presentation from House Lee Levine about the comp plan. And what I think the most exciting part of presentation like that would be the community engagement. And that's going to be a big push for everyone here in this room to push for the community to get involved with that, because a lot of people want to complain about how things are done, but the comp plan sets, it's a plan for the city, how to move forward. So they have a great roadmap for people of all residents, business owners, everybody to get involved and get their voice heard. They have an interactive map that's going to be really cool. So if you have an idea, you can go to the map, you can sign in and you can put that idea on the map. Like if there's a certain intersection, a road, a trail, something you want to see in the city, you can put it on a map and that will populate into their system. I thought that was a really cool feature. So that was, and then they'll have a lot of community input, um, coming up here within the next month. So be on the lookout for that. We talked about the roundabout. And then a couple miscellaneous little things. And the biggest thing is Long Myer Park. We'll be getting an R C track area. So if you like R C cars to play with, the back corner of Long Myer Park, shortly there will be a section for that. And that's really cool because it's a low cost thing. And, um, I might have to go buy an R C truck.
Thank you. Sign for that R C track. All right, moving on to finance committee. Great. On to Mayor City Minister and Staff Reports. Is there a tie?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, just a couple of updates from the various departments in the finance department. Uh, we'll have our audit exit conference, uh, next Monday at eleven A M. That'll be through Microsoft Teams. We'll have it set up in the conference room back here if any of the council members just want to come and join us. Um, otherwise you should have received a link. Um, if not, we can resend that out. Uh, Public Services Department, uh, busy prepping the streets during the cold weather. You may see in the D I S R um, out there, it's came in handy the last couple of mornings. So very appreciative of that. Christmas in the park is in full swing. Um, if you haven't driven by the park in the last, what, two hours, uh, you may want to drive by there and see our thirty-three foot lighted Christmas tree um, that we turned on tonight. It's beautiful. And then we have a, what, about a hundred feet of lighted arch uh, that, that goes over the, the walking path, which is, uh, very cool. And then the stage, if you've been by the stage lately, you've seen the And then the stage, if you've been by the stage lately, you've seen the, the, how it's, how it's coming out, and it'll be ready for this Saturday, uh, for the Christmas in the park function. In the human resources area, uh, we're doing our Thanks Smith, our annual Thanks Smith Employee Council Appreciation Lunch next Wednesday from eleven thirty to one at the community center. You're invited to, to be a part of that. Uh, we have one position actively open in the city for a collections operator. That's the technical term of it. Um, if you want more detail about that, you can do with Cody after this, but.
Every part is that?
Top shores.
Fancy title, fancy title.
And then, uh, in the police, uh, in the police world, uh, they're busy doing entry level and lateral interviews, um, ongoing. And then they're, uh, prepped and ready to go for the parade, uh, that will be this Saturday at nine o'clock. So hopefully y'all come out for that. It's great to have the Christmas parade back. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Matureed, stands. Um, move on my report. I first wanna offer my condolences to the family of former Councilor Joe Baker. Um, he served with city council for a long time here, um, late two thousands, um, so just condolences to them, their friends and family. Um, congratulations to Councilmember Palmer and Wood, uh, and Richardson, um, for, for their election. Looking forward to working with you. I've met with all of you, suffered Joseph again, uh, but I met with the other council members, just going over, um, different committees, possible committee assignments and, um, their expectations and what they wanna see achieved on council. So that was good. Um, I'm surprised you forgot to say that we're in the state championships.
I would believe so.
Thank you. Uh, Yelm, as you probably all knows, in the three A state championships, they play this Friday at, um, Husky Stadium. Hope, um, a lot of folks can make it up there. If not, I believe they have it on some local, um, establishments here. Um, we'll be working on the legislative agenda here coming up at our next council or a study session. And then as well as council committees, um, we can discuss a little bit at study session, but we'll be actually announcing them and making them formal here at the first city council meeting, the only city council meeting in December. So we'll look forward to that. Uh, I know a few of you reached out already on what committees, um, what you want. Um, but every two years, we kind of redo that, um. We'll decide new chairs, new committee assignments. If you wanna be on the same committee, let me know, but I try to rotate at least a little bit, give a variety to folks. And, uh, we'll also be doing, um, election for Mayor Pro Tem in January. So every two years, a new council will do that. Um, we'll just do the same process we have in the past. If someone wants to get nominated, um, give a little speech, um, make a little vote and get down to that. All right, um, other than that, A W C training's coming up. We have December, uh, what was that date? December ninth, um, for the A W C sessual Training. If you're a new council member, and I thank you for the new council members that have signed up already for that, um, it's a good refresher course though. And as always, I hope you, and I'd love to encourage you to attend as many of those trainings you can to get, um, certified as a A W C, uh, certificate of leadership and advanced certificate of leadership. Thank you, Kathy. And that's all I've got. Let's do council committee reports. Start with, Councilor Wood?
Well, I don't have any report, but I would like to take a moment to, uh, to remember Joe Baker. Um, when I first got on the council many, many years ago, Joe was here and part of the group that helped, you know, kind of keep me out of trouble. And, uh, you know, over the, it's, I have a lot of history with him. Uh, my family's, you know, been involved and known his family since, since my grandpa and him worked together out at the bail camp. And, uh, he's gonna be solely miss. Uh, he, uh, he did a lot for this community. He was highly involved in the Moose Lodge for a lot of years. He also, uh, was involved in, uh, Little League, did a lot of, uh, coaching, humping, reffing. Um, you know, it just, it's, it's, this, this community is, uh, it shows a lot of Joe Baker's existence in this community with us, and it's, uh, it's gonna be a whole different world without Joe Baker, and I personally will miss him.
Councilor Wood, Councilor Richardson?
I got nothing of the moment.
Councilor Crossman?
Um, I forgot to mention that R C truck idea along Myer Park was brought forth by Assistant Casey Domins. So thank you, Casey, for bringing that idea forward, making that happen.
Thank you, council member. Uh, Councilor Smith, sorry.
That's Crossman. Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilor Hess?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Palmer?
Uh, just like to thank everybody, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So, yeah, we're having a good time.
Councilor Kaminsky?
Uh, yes, I went, uh, I have my Nisqually River Council meeting, and it is the fiftieth year anniversary of the Nisqually Refuge, and they said they've had three hundred and seventy thousand visitors, and I'm sorry, I don't know if that's to, like, in the whole term or if that's per year, but it's a very busy place. Um, the, we had a presentation by the nonprofit group called Long Live the Kings. I love that name, for the salmon recovery group, the, yeah. So, that's their, that's their name. It's fantastic. So they spoke to us, they are working in conjunction with the Nisqually River Council, the Land Trust, and all the groups involved in the I five bridge project for the river. And in my words, I think they're trying to do the right thing the first time. And so these groups have inserted themselves in the conversation. Um, and they want to be kind of like the pilot project for doing things ecologically the right way the first time, and I think that it would be a great idea. So they want to, their plan is to use contingency fund money, um, to put into ecosystem developments and benefits mitigations and recoveries for the salmon and for, for all the wildlife along the river and to manage flood control. So we had a discussion about that, which was great. And then for the fun fact, National Geographic moment that I provided, they were very excited because they have identified a new, they have a new genetic I D system, and they have discovered a brand new species of salmon that they never knew we had before. So they're actually a different breed of Chinook. We have hatcheries where we have, we develop, you know, hatch the eggs and send them off and down the river into the wild. But these ones have somehow managed to come naturally out of nature, go figure, and they're very resilient, they're very strong, they have a whole different genetic component. Um, they're brighter and bigger to look at, and they said they have very, uh, strong, strong tails, because they think they go more up the river itself versus the tributaries where the little hatchery salmon go. So they were all very, very excited about this brand new natural development in the river system. And apparently, it's the same thing with the herring as well. And the herring are vital to the ecosystem for all the other fish to eat. And then lastly, I, um, handed out a hundred meals for Thanksgiving to needy families through the Bounty for Families, and a special thanks to Grocery Outlet for helping us bag the food. That was last week.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Kaminsky. Uh, there's no executive session scheduled, um, your motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn? I thought somebody knew what's in there.
My Councilor Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Your second, second. Second, my Councilor Palmer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.